Okay, any other questions, Dr. Pope?
Janice, explain, so as of our current record with recorder, this lot is 48.5 or is it 50?
The actual survey distance, property line to property line, is 48.5.
I can't understand if it's 48.5, why it wasn't necessary to ask for a variance? Because it had to be 50 feet to not have a variance?
Yes, typically, we ask the Planning and Zoning Commission if we have any provision, if we have any plan that doesn't meet the current standard, we'll ask the Planning and Zoning Commission to consider a variance from that provision. In this case, we had the parcel division survey that was approved in 2009. The right-of-way isn't actually platted until the final plat. This is still a preliminary plan and a preliminary subdivision plat. So, the land for the street is not actually required and it's not being platted by the bills in front of the council today. In fact, that would have to be platted and accepted with a final plat that would come, could come months later.
So then, if in fact, we would approve this, but I don't understand if it's actually something that was recorded, or if it was, it was recorded, the 48.5 to 50, if that is not consummated, then what we would do would be a moot point because they wouldn't have had a variance?
Well, we would ask the Planning and Zoning Commission. If they don't have the adequate, you know, if they don't have that 50 feet of right-of-way width at Hazelton Drive, and that's just at Hazelton Drive, you know, the land gets wider as you go back into, into the property. So if they don't have that 50 feet minimum right at that intersection, we'll ask the Planning and Zoning Commission whether or not they want to process a variance for that one and a half feet at the time the final plat is submitted.
Go ahead, Dr. Pope.
And then we would vote again?
And you, well, the council has to vote to accept a plat.
Okay.
You know, this is the, this, these bills are the rezoning so that the zoning is consolidated into PUD, and it also is accompanied by the preliminary PUD plan. But that would have to be followed up, because this is a subdivision, would have to be followed up by the acceptance of a final plat that actually creates these lots. So, the preliminary plat just outlines the parameters, kind of the basic parameters for the development, and then the final plat actually creates, creates the lots and creates the right-of-way so that the, and accompanied by that are the improvement plans for the construction of the sanitary sewer, the streets, and all of that. That all has, has to come along with the final plat, which comes later.
Okay. Is the final plat 143?
No.
Oh, okay.
This is a preliminary plat, and subdivision process, we approve a preliminary plat. Planning and Zoning Commission actually approves preliminary plats, but because this involves a rezoning and a PUD plan, that's why the council has it at this time.
I know we have a couple of questions here from other council members, but real quick, what was the vote out of Planning and Zoning on this, Janice? I can't remember.
Eight to zero.
Eight, zero?
On the rezoning, on the PUD plan, it was six to two.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Scrivener next, and then Councilman Lou Bert.
Janice, I have probably two or three questions, but the preliminary question here is, the only bill that's introduced is just the rezoning bill?
The rezoning and the PUD plan.
Okay, I'm not seeing it here, but I'm sure it, oh, I see it now, okay.
It's the, it's the next one, we're getting ready to introduce.
Okay. The, one of the questions that seems to keep coming up, Janice, is once a street is established in there, it's my understanding that our streets have 25-foot setbacks, is that correct?
The new standard adopted by the code, and I can't tell you exactly when that was adopted, but it hasn't always been 25 feet. But the standard that we have today is a setback from the right-of-way, that's where we measure the setback from the right-of-way, and if you have a corner lot, your setback is considered a front yard from both setbacks, and that requires a 25-foot setback. Not all developments, not all corner lots have that setback. In fact, there's a very good example on Ware Street where that particular one, because it was an older right-of-way, was 40 feet, it's a 40-foot right-of-way. Well, that doesn't meet our current standards today, yet the right-of-way is there. A street still fits within that right-of-way, there's a 25-foot street within that, 24-foot street within that right-of-way. Well, the setbacks of the houses on that adjacent to Ware Street are similar to what is proposed on, on this development. I believe it's six feet on one side from the right-of-way, 15 feet from the curb, and then on the other side, on the west side of Ware, 13 feet from the right-of-way, and the house is actually 22 feet from the curb.
Okay, so, since this is a new street, and since it essentially creates two corner lots when you run a street through there, I know we had some conversation away from this meeting about this, but how, one of the objections in the neighborhood is that, that we are not living up to our standards. How, I know you just went through an explanation, but I would like a little further explanation as to how do you approve something like this that doesn't meet that 25-foot setback? What is, what's the criteria that you use, and what is the consistent criteria that you use in old neighborhoods?
In old neighborhoods, when there's a situation like this, a variance, a specific variance, it has not been required previously. Basically, it's a grandfathered situation. If a property line changes to a right-of-way line, that's just considered a grandfathered situation. A variance, we don't issue variances for that.
But it, but is there any denying that that will infringe on those property owners that have that property that now becomes a corner lot? How do, how do you reconcile the, the conflict between the two property owners?
Throughout our, I have to reconcile it by looking at, at our city as a whole. As this city developed, the streets and neighborhoods developed along the ridges, and there's a lot of land behind those ridges that was left vacant because the technology and the equipment in there didn't exist to, to develop that land. And perhaps it was more cost-effective just to develop along the ridge, and you saw that with those previous photographs from 1954 where you can clearly see the development occurs, occurring along the ridge with a lot of vacant land in behind it. Well, in some situations, well, that particular situation, those early subdivisions were developed without the benefit of having professional staff available, and the city didn't have a subdivision code at that time. So you're relying on the Planning and Zoning Commission to anticipate future development applying the zoning code that they had in place at the time to lay out development. It's a very different situation today. We have codes where we say, similar to the length of the cul-de-sac and similar to what we have in the code pertaining to the length of blocks, because it, it drives a little more thought and requirement behind it to encourage connectivity. So we're always thinking about, well, where can we possibly get another right-of-way or a street in there so that we don't leave a large portion of area landlocked, landlocked as was done in the 20s and 30s and 40s and 50s? Today, we try to make sure that we have adequate right-of-ways platted as a part of the subdivision so that we don't, so we have a way to have right-of-way into those areas. Now, having said that, a lot of those old subdivisions have right-of-ways, or they have lots that were undeveloped and left vacant because somebody was thinking they might develop land behind that at a later time. And so, we still have to use, use those existing right-of-ways, and where we have lots that access land behind those, behind those developments that are on the ridges, then we do try to develop our community so that we don't leave a large amount of, of undeveloped land today. Because basically, it has access to city services, it completes an area, sometimes we need it to connect streets, and sometimes we, it just makes for a nice addition to a residential area. So we do try to not leave those large vacant tracts today. Sorry, that was kind of a long-winded explanation.
Councilman Lou Bert.
Janice, I would like a clarification. Is the original plat of the land show a 50-feet, 50-foot opening to Hazelton?
Yes.
And it's just through the sophistication of measurement equipment that you've now discovered that it's only 48 and a half between the pins?
Yes, actually, the, the surveyor on the plat actually shows that. Of course, you can't see it on this particular screen, but if you had the full-size plan in front of you, you would see the actual dimensions from, from all of the lines that they, that they make during the survey.
And that does leave a 50-foot gap there for the street?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions on 142? If not, we'll move on to first reading of 143.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri approving a preliminary PUD plan for 10.79 acres located in the 1600 block of Hazelton Drive, Jefferson City, Coe County, Missouri.
Janice.
Thank you. Again, this PUD plan is for these 15 lots, 15 single-family residential lots on about 10 and a half acres. The zoning is being consolidated into PUD. Currently, the zoning on this four acres is RS3, which is the same adjoining, the same zoning as the property adjoining. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any other questions for Janice? Councilman Schulte.
Janice, the, I think in the planning and zoning, they use the term non-conforming. Under the PUD, it would be a non-conforming situation with the requirements for the property that's changing from RS3 to PUD. Under the RS3 zoning requirements, I guess, but why are we changing it from RS3 to PUD? And could the developer not have asked for a variance on the width of the drive and leave it as RS3?
The, the developer could have developed without a change in the zoning, he could have proposed a subdivision without changing the zoning. We would have still required him to produce a PUD plan because part of the property is zoned PUD, and that's what governs this particular zoning process. On the length of the street, that still would have been required because our subdivision code contains that provision that a variance has, has to be considered. Actually, if you read that section in the subdivision code, section 33-13, it suggests that if any condition exists that presents a impediment to a plat, then the Planning and Zoning Commission, the staff can recommend, and the Planning and Zoning Commission can issue a variance to that particular provision. And the development could have occurred under either zoning, RS3, or PUD, or under what's proposed today as PUD. So, they wouldn't have had to propose a zoning change, but you would have had the PUD plan anyway.
Janice, I have a question just for some, I guess, a little bit of history on this. If you don't know tonight, that's fine, but I'd like to know at our next meeting. When the PUD was originally approved for the condo-type units, what was the, what was the feel of the neighborhood, so to speak, at that time?
Well, at that time, the, it was only this property that was involved. Of course, the property actually went out to West Main. But I don't recall that we had...
Was the, the PUD at, the PUD at that time had an entrance from West Main, is that correct?
It did, it had a, it had a driveway from West Main.
Okay, all right. Councilman Scrivener on 143.
Janice, I presume that the developer could have requested the PUD portion of that to be zoned RS3 the same as the other?
Yes, that's correct.
Would that have required a plat being submitted, a preliminary plat being submitted with the zoning request, or could they have just requested zoning, rezoning with no plat?
They could have requested zoning, rezoning with no plat.
Okay, so, would, is the PUD, as you have reviewed it, more or less restrictive than the RS3 subdivision requirements currently, or can you say?
Well, in, in this case, it's probably more restrictive because the lots, with the exception of one, adhere to a higher, a higher, or lower density, I should say. It conforms to the RS2 standard, whereas this, this area is zoned RS3 with smaller lots. So the density is higher in the adjoining subdivision as, than it is in the proposed subdivision.
So if the developer were to have requested RS3 and, and it was granted, then they could file a plat with more dense development and therefore more houses on, I mean, supposing that the terrain would support it, they could actually build more houses in that same space than what, under RS3 than what they're proposing under their PUD?
It, it's possible. One thing that the PUD also does is these lots on the riverside are, you know, the setback from that bluff is a pretty critical setback. And so, the lots that are platted, they've already estimated where the building footprint will be, and so the PUD plan actually shows where that building footprint will be, and that there will be a 25-foot setback from that particular property line rather than having, which is another standard of 30 feet from a single-family, a rear property line. So, that's one area where the, the flexibility of having this PUD plan comes into play because it, then the property owner, all of those individual property owners on the riverside don't have to come in and petition the Board of Adjustment for a setback variance.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions on 143 this evening? Seeing none, Janice, thank you very much for that report, and we'll hear more about this. Two weeks is the public hearing, is that right?
That's correct.
You're at 6 o'clock?
February 20.
Thank you. Now we'll have first reading of Bill 2011-144.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri accepting and approving the final subdivision plat of St. Mary's Health Center subdivision, Section 1, a subdivision of the City of Jefferson, Missouri.
Janice.
Thank you, Mayor. This subdivision also was recommended by the Planning and Zoning Commission at their meeting in December. And the final plat is coming forward at this time, basically for Section 1. This particular drawing shows the extent of the entire development. Section 1 is the area that's just being platted right here, and that's where the actual hospital will be located. Section 1 consists of 42.87 acres. The entire site, or the entire area of the preliminary plat consists of 106 acres. Again, this is the preliminary subdivision plat that shows the entire 106 acres, shows the new street, Mission Drive, shows the location of the roundabout, the extension of the streets in, into the development as a whole. The final plat just includes the hospital itself, the site for that, the extension of the street, and Reserve Tract over to the east. The access will be from the new Mission Drive and Rolling Hills Road, and the extension of the utilities and infrastructure is being planned and worked on as we speak. Be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, any questions of Janice on 144? Okay, moving on, we'll have a first reading of 145.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri acquiring property at 605, 609, 615 Mulberry Street in Jefferson City, Missouri using hazard mitigation grant funds for purposes of clearing the flood plain.
Melva.
Thank you, Mayor. This ordinance would allow the city to acquire the, the three units, or the three multi-unit buildings over there on Mulberry Street, basically through a hazard mitigation grant. One of them, there was a fire in it late last year, and the other two are also part of the same property. Currently, the owners have entered into an agreement whereby that they are willing to sell the property. The idea would be that the property would be acquired, the, the buildings would be demolished, and the current tenants would be relocated, and we've met with those, and we are beginning that process as we speak. If you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Any questions for Melva on 145? Ralph.
Melva, the, the greens, the, the space must be held, is green space, and will that go to parks then?
I'm not sure about that.
To be decided later?
Yes, it's, it's just, it's just an agreement that the city needs to make, is that there won't be any more, there won't be any other construction on the site that'll be cleared space.
All right, thanks.
Okay, any other questions on 145? Seeing none, we'll have first reading of 146.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with Nick Rockers Heating and Cooling Incorporated, doing business as air-served for the fire station apparatus bay ventilation project.
Roger Shorts.
Thank you, Mayor. The city took bids on this ventilation equipment to be installed in all the fire stations. Nick Rockers Heating and Cooling was the low bidder. We did receive two bids on this, and the low bid was $98,000. I'd be happy to entertain any questions.
Any questions for Roger on 146 dealing with the fire station ventilation? Seeing none, we'll move on to first reading of 147.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri vacating and discontinuing an easement on Lot 40, The Trails of Kaufman Hills, Section 3.
Roger.
Thank you again. We had a request from the developer of this subdivision to, they want to add a community swimming pool, and there is an easement, the city had there for sewer and, for sanitary sewer and storm sewer. It conflicts with where they want to build the swimming pool. The sewer line actually got located in a different location, so we don't really need this easement any longer. But the location where they want to build the swimming pool does impact the setback requirement on the stream that runs along there. So we're working with the developer to require them to add additional shrubbery and trees along that area so that the setback will be, not cause a problem in the future with any erosion along that stream bank.
Okay, any questions for Roger on 147? Seeing none, we'll move on to 2011-148, first read please.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri amending Section 19401 Motor Vehicles and Traffic Schedule N, Parking Meter Zones, and Monthly Parking Fees, Subparagraph B, On-Street Locations of the Code of the City of Jefferson by Modifying a Portion of Jefferson Street.
Roger.
We had a request on the 300 block of Jefferson Street to look at trying to get the turnover a little faster. Currently, there's two-hour meters on that section, and, and the business owners there would like to see that turned over a little faster. So, this went through the Transportation and Traffic Commission, and their recommendation is to make the time limit for those meters 90 minutes, which is the same as what High Street is today.
Okay. Any questions for Roger there on 147? Seeing none, we'll move on to first read of 1, I'm sorry, 149.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri amending the Jefferson City Neighborhood Reinvestment Act, Part 3.
Ms. Melva, fast.
Thank you, Mayor. This is the amendment to the, an existing ordinance that allows for down payment assistance to new owners of properties in Old Town that have either been vacant or rentals for at least 12 months. Recently, when the banks came up with their new down, with their new lower interest rate program, there have been owners who already owned properties in Old Town that wanted to sell their existing property and purchase another home in Old Town to refurbish. Lower Ward was one of those three. Basically, if, if they sell their current home to a renter or to someone outside of Old Town, then that would, that would, they would also be eligible for the down payment program, is how the, the amendment reads. And it would, again, be a net increase in homeownership in Old Town. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Melva? Okay, Melva, thanks for that report. Moving on, we'll have third reading of, underneath bills pending, we'll have third reading of 2011-134.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri levying and assessing a special tax bill against particular lots and tracts of land, fronting and abutting the 1,200 and 1,300 blocks of El Marine Avenue and the 1,100 block of Morrow Drive in the City of Jefferson, Missouri for the improvement of said curb and sidewalk.
Mr. Shorts.
Thank you, Mayor. The city's completed the sidewalk and curb improvements on El Marine. There were 33 property owners that took advantage of this. There are six owners today that have not paid their bill, are part of their bill, and the total amount that they owe is $2,633. This proposal would allow that to be taxed billed, and the way that process works is that the property owners would be able to make payments over a five-year period. The finance director would send them a bill at the beginning of each year. If they pay the bill within 30 days, everything's fine, you go on to the next year. However, if they don't, then the clerk turns this over to the county collector as a tax bill, and once they're past that 30-day period, they do start getting charged interest at 8 percent. So, that's the process, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Roger on 134? Mr. Brant.
Roger, do the folks understand?
Yes, they, they understood this, and, and some of them actually chose to go this route. They saw that making payments over a five-year period looked like a good deal to them.
All right, thanks.
Okay, any other questions, Roger? Moving on to 2011-135, third reading please. Oh, I'm sorry, I guess we'll vote on 134. Roll call, please.
Bray.
Aye.
Carol.
Aye.
Harvey.
Aye.
Coon.
Aye.
Lou Bert.
Aye.
Hope.
Aye.
Schulte.
Aye.
Scrivener.
Aye.
Weber.
Aye.
Motion passes. Just so the record shows, behind every good mayor, there's a city clerk. Now we'll have third reading of 2011-135.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an inter-municipal agreement with St. Martin's.
Mr. Hilbert.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Coon.
Because the negotiations haven't been completed on this, I like to have it put on the informal calendar.
Okay, as the sponsor, you can do that, I think, unless two members find that not in their liking. Looks like that's good to go. Thank you, Rich. Moving on to 2011-136, third reading please.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri vacating and discontinuing a portion of Alameda Drive.
Roger.
Thank you, Mayor. We've received a request from the YMCA, who is the property owner on both sides of this platted street, to have Alameda Drive vacated on, adjacent to the property that they own. They would like to have it for future development, and if, it was a stub street anyway with the cul-de-sacs, so the city feels that this is certainly okay. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Roger? Seeing none, I feel you're ready to vote, we'll have roll call, please.
Carol.
Aye.
Harvey.
Aye.
Coon.
Aye.
Lou Bert.
Aye.
Hope.
Aye.
Schulte.
Aye.
Scrivener.
Aye.
Weber.
Aye.
Bray.
Aye.
Motion passes. Now we'll have third reading of 2011-138.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri amending Chapter 19 Motor Vehicles and Traffic Schedule G Stop Intersections, Subparagraph B, Other Specified Intersections of the Code of the City of Jefferson by the addition of Miller Street at Vetter Lane.
Mr. Shorts.
Thank you. This intersection currently has stop signs on Vetter Lane, and Miller Street's allowed to flow through. This has been reviewed by the Transportation and Traffic Commission that had a request to make it a four-way stop. We actually counted the traffic on both of these roads, and Vetter Street actually has almost twice as much traffic as what Miller Street does at this location, so it's the recommendation to make this a four-way stop and add the stop signs on Miller Street.
We actually counted the traffic on both of these roads, and Vetter Street actually has almost twice as much traffic as what Miller Street does at this location, so it's the recommendation to make this a four-way stop and add the stop signs on Miller Street.
Okay, any questions of Roger on this bill? Seeing none, we'll have roll call, please.
Harvey.
Aye.
Coon.
Aye.
Lubert.
Aye.
Pope.
Aye.
Schulte.
Aye.
Scrivner.
Aye.
Weber.
Aye.
Bray.
Motion passes. Now, we'll have third reading of 2011-138.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, amending Chapter 19 Motor Vehicles and Traffic Schedule G Stop Intersections. Subparagraph B, Other Specified Intersections of the Code of the City of Jefferson by the addition of Miller Street at Vetter Lane.
Mr. Schwartz.
Thank you. This intersection currently has stop signs on Vetter Lane, and Miller Street's allowed to flow through. This has been reviewed by the Transportation and Traffic Commission that had a request to make it a four-way stop. We actually counted the traffic on both of these roads, and Vetter Street actually has almost twice as much traffic as what Miller Street does at this location, so it's the recommendation to make this a four-way stop and add the stop signs on Miller Street.
Okay, any questions of Roger on this bill? Seeing none, we'll have roll call, please.
Harvey.
Aye.
Coon.
Aye.
Lubert.
Aye.
Pope.
Aye.
Schulte.
Aye.
Scrivner.
Aye.
Weber.
Aye.
Bray.
Motion passes. Now, we'll have, we'll entertain a motion at this point in time for Resolution 2011-41.
So, moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded at this point in time. We will have discussion by Nathan Nicholas.
Thank you, Your Honor. Again, this is a motion to appoint Roger Schrader, I'm sorry, Roger Schwartz, I've got too many Rogers, I'm going to stop hiring people with same first names. Roger Schwartz is our representative for the new Capleview Drainage District. This is consolidation of a drainage district and a levee district north of the river. The city is the primary property owner in that area, and so, we need to have a delegate, and we've not really had a delegate in the past. So, I thought that because they're kind of reorganizing, that it would be a good idea to have the Director of Public Works do that. As the resolution says, he has no ability to bind the city to anything, but he will stand up for our interests and report back to us.
Okay, discussion on 2011-41. Seeing none, we'll have roll call, please.
Lubert.
Aye.
Pope.
Aye.
Schulte.
Aye.
Scrivner.
Aye.
Weber.
Aye.
Bray.
Aye.
Carol.
Aye.
Harvey.
Aye.
Coon.
Aye.
Motion passes. Now, we'll have, we'll entertain a motion at this point in time for Resolution 2011-41.
So, moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded at this point in time. We will have discussion by Nathan Nicholas.
Thank you, Your Honor. Again, this is a motion to appoint Roger Schrader, I'm sorry, Roger Schwartz, I've got too many Rogers, I'm going to stop hiring people with same first names. Roger Schwartz is our representative for the new Capleview Drainage District. This is consolidation of a drainage district and a levee district north of the river. The city is the primary property owner in that area, and so, we need to have a delegate, and we've not really had a delegate in the past. So, I thought that because they're kind of reorganizing, that it would be a good idea to have the Director of Public Works do that. As the resolution says, he has no ability to bind the city to anything, but he will stand up for our interests and report back to us.
Okay, discussion on 2011-41. Seeing none, we'll have roll call, please.
Lubert.
Aye.
Pope.
Aye.
Schulte.
Aye.
Scrivner.
Aye.
Weber.
Aye.
Bray.
Motion passes. Now, we'll have third reading of 2011-135.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, amending Chapter 19 Motor Vehicles and Traffic Schedule G Stop Intersections. Subparagraph B, Other Specified Intersections of the Code of the City of Jefferson by the addition of Miller Street at Vetter Lane.
Mr. Schwartz.
Thank you. This intersection currently has stop signs on Vetter Lane, and Miller Street's allowed to flow through. This has been reviewed by the Transportation and Traffic Commission that had a request to make it a four-way stop. We actually counted the traffic on both of these roads, and Vetter Street actually has almost twice as much traffic as what Miller Street does at this location, so it's the recommendation to make this a four-way stop and add the stop signs on Miller Street.
Okay, any questions of Roger on this bill? Seeing none, we'll have roll call, please.
Harvey.
Aye.
Coon.
Aye.
Lubert.
Aye.
Pope.
Aye.
Schulte.
Aye.
Scrivner.
Aye.
Weber.
Aye.
Bray.
Aye.
Carol.
Aye.
Harvey.
Aye.
Coon.
Aye.
Motion passes. Now, we'll have presentations from the gallery. First this evening, I have Velma Steinman, who signed up. And next on our agenda, I have Phil Freeman. Is there anyone else that would like to speak this evening? I see some other people here, so we're just wanting to see that I didn't miss anyone. Okay, Velma, please tell us your name and address, and please limit your remarks to three minutes.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm Velma Steinman. I reside at 110 North Lincoln Street, and I'm just here to give a great thank you to Chief Schrader and his police department. I had an incident in my home at 1:30 a.m. on Wednesday morning. My son's car was hit by a hit-and-run driver, and the car was knocked into our yard and only within five feet of hitting our house. Once I placed the call to 911, the officers were there almost immediately, and the suspect was apprehended, all within about 10-minute time. And I just want to let everybody know how much I appreciate them, because they do not get enough thank you and praise for what they do. Thank you.
Velma, thank you very much for being here tonight. Any questions or comments for Velma? Seeing none, I will move on to Mr. Freeman.
In case you all haven't heard, there's going to be an election tomorrow. I stood before you back in October with the transformation issue, and you sent that on to the voters with a vote of 10 to nothing. I was here earlier in line, gave you several projects that we've been able to accomplish in Old Town without any substantial funding. Ladies and gentlemen, that's the tip of the iceberg of what we can accomplish if transformation is passed. People are, the presentations have been concluded. In about 12 hours, it's going to be in the hands of the voters, and I can't tell you how close this election is going to be. We hope for a successful conclusion tomorrow. But as I said, it's in the hands of the voters now. We've done everything we can do. The presentation's been concluded, and I certainly hope that the voters will choose to pass this, because as I said, what I outlined to you earlier is the tip of the iceberg of what would be accomplished if transformation is indeed successful. I would be happy to answer any questions, Mayor.
Any questions for Phil this evening? Robert.
I don't have a question, but I do have a comment. I just felt you, as usual, whenever you're called, you've answered, and you've been called many times over the years to assist with various projects, and you've always done an excellent job, and the same would be true of this one. I just want to personally thank you for the work that you put into this, along with Ken, who's not here tonight.
No, Ken's at the campaign headquarters making phone calls. Thank you, Bob. I appreciate that you're saying that.
Phil, thank you. Okay. Moving on to council and staff discussion of presentation comments or topics. Carrie Carroll.
I'll just echo what Phil said. I'm so excited about the possibilities for our community for tomorrow. I just feel like I can just say, finally, it's in our hands now, and I just can't wait because the potential is so great to make the biggest impact on the progress of our community. So, can't wait to vote yes tomorrow and hope everybody gets out. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else with comments about that?
I do have a quick comment about tomorrow's election. They're calling for a 30% turnout. That means that 70% of the people within our community that are registered voters will not be voting. I would like to see those people come out tomorrow. There's no doubt that several men and women around our city have given the ultimate sacrifice through the years so that we could even have the right to vote tomorrow. So, please vote tomorrow, and as they say, vote often.
Okay, moving on, we'll move on to new business. Any new business for the council tonight? Any unfinished business? I'm sorry, Carrie?
I have an announcement that yesterday, the fire department put flags downtown lining the street of High Street with the 100th anniversary of the fire department and the celebration for this year, and the flags looked really nice, and there was good coverage and photographs in the paper. So, well done on the flags, and if you haven't had a chance, be sure to drive down High Street and take a look. Thank you.
Chief, do you have any comments? I know Chief was kind enough to invite me the other day to accept a proclamation on behalf of the city for the fire department's anniversary at the governor's office. It was very nice. Chief?
The activities will continue throughout the year, culminating in October, at the timeline of when the city created its first career paid fire department. So, there will be a number of events. We expect to see several activities in June when the summer fire school program is in town, and we're going to take that opportunity to share with our friends around the state the opportunity to celebrate our existence.
All right, thank you, Chief. Did you have a comment?
I'm just going to add your comment in addition to voting often.
That's right, early and often, thank you. Nathan has something, too.
I just wanted to follow up with what Carrie said, and, you know, as if we weren't proud enough of our firefighters, those flags they put up on their own time, it was their own idea, with their own money. Man, I mean, those are some guys who are really dedicated, and I've discussed with them some of their plans for the anniversary, and it is going to be an event that is going to bring great credit to this city, and I just am so proud of those guys, and Chief, I hope you'll pass that on to them.
Okay, any other comments tonight? Any other unfinished business? Seeing none, any other scheduled reports for this evening? If not, we will entertain a motion to adjourn. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, same sign, motion passes. We're adjourned. Have a great night, and please vote tomorrow.